So for Monday night, it's actually, I think it's going to be a fairly quiet meeting, at this point at least, I don't know. You got the minutes for the December 3rd and December 17th meetings? So they were emailed this afternoon. So if you could look those over, and if there are no problems, I'd like to move those on Monday. But you did get those, et cetera. On the local laws, so Local Law A by Mr. Hawley is an introduction mending the -- which section of laws is mending? Well, it relates to minutes of meetings by public bodies. The intent is to require that public bodies are required to keep minutes, establish procedures for keeping and publishing them, and also that they be placed on the city website. So this is basically establishes some standards, which they're technically already required to comply with.
I was gonna ask you, is that not in their bylaws?
It's covered under the Public Officers' Law. So it just reinforces and also adds the additional provision regarding posting on the website, and that they have procedures in place. And we have had some issues with some public bodies that have not been really doing that. And I know, Tom, you had an amendment or revision that you wanted to make.
Yeah, I wanted to get in there, and again, I had sent out, and I'll send everybody, an example of minutes from the Renslerville Planning Board, where they put, a citizen comes in, I shouldn't say citizen, if a person comes in to testify that their name beendered and if they were for or against, I mean, nothing too, you know, long, but just, you know, they were for the project or against the project. So in the future, if you want to go back, or, you know, if something takes several meetings, and there's one project, I know, that's over a year, that you can go back and say, well, you know, 30 people were for it and 20 were against. I think it, you know, they take the time to come down, I think there should be some record.
So what it would include, I haven't seen, what it would include is this provision that minutes where there is a, where a public body, it's either a public hearing, or they take public comment, that the minutes should reflect the name of the members of the Republic of the Republic, I'm sorry.
Of the public.
Of the Republic, of the public who spoke, and what position they may have taken.
Right.
Which is what our minutes do.
And then additional points, I think it could also require that other documents are submitted, right, other than the applicant, that they are recorded somewhere in the public process.
That gets beyond, a little bit beyond.
Yeah, because this is about minutes of that meeting. Now, if you brought in a document that was submitted, maybe they could be, you know, Joe Smith brought in a document.
No, oh, no, put it up in the works. Yeah, a little bit of a different issue. And this is not meant to be specific, I mean, the intention, I mean, I know Tom's concern is going to the planning board, but it's meant to be more generic to any public body, so it is generic, whatever.
Because the BCA had problems to.
And still leaving within the purview of these bodies, and what their capabilities are, what their staffing is, et cetera.
Yep.
Make sure that we're not making it so it's overly burdensome.
No, my point was, I know the funding the planning board did, and they issued a decision on it, and so the council, the lawyer for the applicant committee said, oh, there's nothing in the record, I don't know what research.
Well, there is an issue with the planning board decisions, and whether or not they really include findings of fact, and things like that, but that's a different issue. But this will be an introduction, will be referred to Council Operations for Monday night. Any questions on that? Council Operations.
Who's that?
Me.
You?
Yeah, I think you're on it, too.
I'm on it, too. Oh, I always think of ethics.
Right, well, it's that, too. Okay. Local Law G is going to be held.
Oh, this is on the? Local Law G, this one today?
Yeah, go ahead.
This man, Chris Fats, and he was informing a couple of days ago that there was a working group that did this study, and right now he's just waiting for that to get more information from them, and then we're gonna make a decision.
Yeah, okay.
I've been talking to Chris Fats about this stuff. So I'm just waiting for Chris Fats.
Local Law, then ordinances introduced. Ordinance, 11119, this relates to the number of reports that are required for, right now it's what, two reports a year?
Yeah.
And this would be the annual report regarding MWBE compliance?
Yep.
This will be an introduction by Mr. Kimbrough, referring to Human Resources, and you have a meeting coming up if you want to get in on that agenda, I think you still can.
Yes, can you squeeze that in there?
And that will be for Monday, okay? On the ordinances held, I don't know if we're gonna have any action on Monday or not. Number of them are on the finance agenda. I don't, Jude, if you anticipate any of them possibly coming up for Monday or not? Or depending?
Possibly. Here's, here's the problem, you have $15 million in bonding, and you looked at the spreadsheet that Darius provided us with, our debt service costs are gonna go up by $5.5 million next year if we bond everything. We're not going to, $5.5 million, you have to come up with it somehow, and there's about $1.5 million offset from savings from the streetlights, you know, he anticipated next year, so that's $4 million. But essentially, Mike doesn't want me to talk about this, but that's essentially 7% tax increase. And so what do we need to reduce that? So I, we're going to be looking at these five bonding ordinances, we did have a conversation with Mike about two of them are on the agenda, because I don't think that we need to pass them.
Okay.
And that could be, you know, $2.5 million.
Because there's other revenue or unused money?
There's some that are available currently, but has not been utilized for these purposes. And in a couple cases, well, in the case of pedestrian safety, it's gonna be 100% available, but, and actual construction isn't gonna be until 2021 potentially, so I'd say we have $3.6 million in bonding out there already for traffic engineering that isn't being utilized, so why don't we make that $5.1 million?
And what's their response?
He sees my point, he's wondering if those other bonds can be used for pedestrian safety. I'm like, if you look at what we're talking about, it's a lot of traffic signaling, which is what those other bonds are, a lot of those other bonds are for, or it's for roadway safety, pedestrian safety, roadway safety. You know, basically, I said, if he gets to a point where he actually has got a plan for all $3.6 million, and he needs to come back to us mid-year for authorization, we can give him the authorization, and he can start spending based upon the fact that bonding authorization is there without the borrowing and actually occurred. So, so anyway, and then, and then there's, you know, overall, I'm wondering whether it's appropriate for us to take into consideration and tentatively reach a conclusion, but wait, have the committee wait until we've considered all of the bonds to figure out.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And is Darius, you know, originally saying we have to lock the market, that this is, is going to not be raised, but.
So I had a lengthy conversation with Mike today, and he basically has been pushing for it, but it's okay. Now, the other thing is, this morning I was talked by Randy Milano.
That's okay to delay.
To delay somewhat, but.
Well, not as quickly as we were originally.
I was hoping Randy Milano today that their initial estimates for their road is way over what they proposed, and so they need to go back to the drawing board, and it'll be like, at least another week before he comes up with an alternate plan. So I've been telling them.
But not necessarily a week for that plan to be shared with us, for them to come up with a plan.
Well.
I'd like to see if you're fully authorized.
Right, right. Well, and then Mike says to me, well, you guys are requiring an inordinate, unprecedented amount of information. And I was like, Mike, we are talking about roads, are you telling me that the county council has ever passed the bond?
Who'd ever done it without seeing the road list?
Never.
Right. So, and he goes, well, on that one, I agree with you, but some of the other stuff that you're asking for us. I'm asking for some of the other stuff because you have all this money sitting out there, and I want to know what you come with the old money. Anyway, well, what is the thinking when it would be good, you know, for the, for the question?
Oh, Sue had something to say.
I'll find some, okay, I'm understanding why so much is put forward. Do they take that into consideration, the debt service? I think that would be a question. Well, Mike doesn't, thinks it's, you know, one time, and they're, the following year, so next year it's supposed to be over $24 million, the following year is $20 million, which is still about $2.5 million over where we should be if we're taking our debt limit seriously. So it's, you know, when we talk about the streetlights, I had said, you know, kind of the first year we are going to be over that, but if we keep our borrowing down to about $10 million a year, 10 to 13 million, depending on what the interest rates are, then we could potentially be okay, and, you know, be within the debt service limit. And that's essentially what I'm seeing, but we're at $15 million, so, yeah, but even with that, because we're in a process where our old debt service payment schedule is dropping, and it dropped last year to this year, and then it's actually gonna go up slightly next year, barely worth mentioning compared to all of the cost of the streetlights, and then it goes down to $6 million. And the problem is we keep on adding, you know, more money onto that. So, he says he shouldn't look at it from the standpoint, my conversation with Mike, we shouldn't be looking at it a one-for-one, okay, if you have to go up by, you know, net of $4 million, your debt service, and even taking into consideration the savings from the streetlights, that you shouldn't be looking at that as automatically that's gonna result in a tax increase, you know, we can look at other revenue. Then we started having a conversation about.
$4 million.
The trash, the curbside waste collection fee, which we already increased this year, are going to pay as you throw, there's potentially, you know, some money there, and I said, Mike, keep in mind that that sunsets this year. So the council, I said, you can talk to me all you want, but, and you guys can adopt a budget next year, and we don't have to approve it, but that piece of legislation needs to be adopted by the council, and that is part of the reason why I want to see us reduce some of, as much as we can, in the borrowing this year. So as I said in my email to all council members, essentially, I see this as, you know, what do we need versus what do we want? And this particularly year, because we have that level of an increase, but we can look forward to like a drop, you know, the following year, this particularly year, we should really be toeing the line on, even next year, with that $6 million drop-off on the current schedule with it, we're still looking at being, you know, $1 or $2 million over our debt service limit, and, you know, in carrying that forward. And Mike has, you know, so tomorrow, I said that we're gonna have a robust discussion. He said, well, do you think we ought to cancel the meeting because I just don't want?
Cancel what?
The meeting.
Tomorrow, yes.
Because he doesn't want to come in and fight about this. And I said, I'm not planning on fighting, I think we should have an open and honest discussion.
Those questions don't change.
Because after all, it's not Darius, and it's not Mike, who need to pass a budget with a tax increase in it, or with, or, you know, the curbside waste collection fee, and so people need to know what, where, you know, the path that we're on, and understand why we need to be cautious.
And the trajectory is gonna keep going up.
Well, hey, don't bite your tongue.
It's going up, no, you could get paid.
Well, first of all, what needs to be done on what we're doing with the waste collection fee, et cetera, we should have, begin having that discussion before October 1, when they submit the budget, and they probably won't even submit it to us on October 1. But that's the type of conversation where you need to have a deeper discussion in advance of what they propose in the budget, and not give us something like a fait accompli. I think Sue had something to say, actually.
I just wanted to let you guys know that I did invest in the life, and I asked for it to be posted, so hopefully it's posted, and I'm pretty sure it's available on the website. But the long and the short of this, time is of the essence. The treasurer needs to negotiate a higher earnings credit rate with the bank. The bank is preventing us from maximizing our interest income. So you borrow money at a certain interest rate, and we know interest rates are going up throughout the year, we can take that money, and we can invest it in treasuries, and have them roll in treasuries until you spend the money, and you will pretty much almost offset your bond rate to a certain, after a certain point in time. But I understand their point of, you know, trying to borrow money because the interest rates are low, but if you don't invest in the money.
Then it makes no difference.
You're not earning interest, and we have too much money remaining every year from these bonds.
And we're not investing that remaining money?
Pardon me?
And we're not investing?
Maximizing the investment. When I say, and that's interesting, when you say you're not investing the money, because I would say, are you investing the money? And they're like, yes, I invest the money. And I'm like, well, what are you investing?
Invested in it.
Money markets. Well, money markets aren't worth it right now, you need to invest in treasuries. 30-year treasuries are over 205 basis points. The bank, I, why he negotiated at least 105, he's only negotiated 90 basis points, so the bank is holding on to all our money. And I say, time is of the essence, because 54 million is gonna come in for taxes, and if the bank doesn't let us invest the money, we're missing the opportunity. So last year, he started investing work aggressively in like March, in April, but we got $50 million in January. January, February is when you can invest the tax money, it's coming in quick. And this is, I don't understand why I have not got the point across. So unless I get mad, which I don't want to do that, but I published the audit, it's going on the website, it's very complicated. I just want to make sure you all understand, it's as simple as earning interest on money you borrow. That's how simple it is.
So by when are you saying we should make our decision on bonding issues?
Well, the thing is, is, you know, people have asked me, some county council people have asked me, hold on, so you think we should, and I go, I'm not one to answer that. If you want an analysis done, to say, what if you borrowed all the money, and the interest rates went up a half a point every quarter, and we got to invest our money, what is, what do the numbers say?
Get the outcome.
What is the outcome? Will you, as far as, to be, I first I heard, you know, if the debt is gonna go up this much, and it would be quite to, you know, a percentage, you know, several percents for tax increase, somebody should do the analysis to cover the interest income for all this money that is coming in, and we never maximize it. So we used to, we had a budget of $30,000, and so this year, you know, got several hundred thousand, next year they budgeted 500,000, and everybody's patting themselves on the back. That is nothing compared to what the rates are right now. Next year, they think they're a million easily, but I'm not, I'm just saying, how much is the, somebody should do an analysis. What's the debt payment? If you invested, what's your time, what's your cash flow, your timeline? It's not that hard. But, so, I have, you're talking about, it is a little bit separate from the issues of whether you borrowed.
The money or not.
To begin with.
Doing.
You're talking about the interest that we're paying, and the interest that you're earning on the money. On money that's unspent. Your concern is unspent money, borrowing unspent money. Their treasury budget's concern is, we're never gonna get rates this low. But you need to figure out, if you pay one year of interest.
And you borrow for speculative purposes.
Well, no, I agree with your questions, don't get me wrong. I think that if it wasn't for the county council asking the questions, I keep saying budgets should be asking these questions, and I've been told that I'm wasting people's time with these audits. Don't don't haunt me, because there are several problems we have, and they're not, you're asking the right questions. Budgets should be asking these questions, you're not wasting their time, they should be doing that and giving it to you. That's why your questions are more.
Some of what I'm asking is anticipated by our city charter.
That's right.
To have a timeline.
Right, right, yes.
And, and for this, so I just asked, and I forward on people what the APD's saying with regard to all the existing projects for road safety, et cetera, and they're all in design. We're talking about $500,000 sitting in an account since 2010, and it's in design. And I sat down with Chief Sears last year, and he tried to eke out some sort of, every project should have a day of reporting.
But when you ask for the timeline, there are.
And it's part of the city charter.
Right, but they need to be updated, but.
That's true. Unprecedented demand of information being requested by.
I don't think you've asked her, you know, as much as what they should be supplying.
Anyway.
Anyway.
So we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow to talk about, overall, my concerns versus how they address those concerns. And, and, you know, I would encourage people to come to that meeting, because I think, you know, listening, getting your own comfort level with what we're doing, or not, you know? And then, you know, and then we have these 15 bonding ordinances, people consider five as a tomorrow, so, so, you know, I've told them, I've made it clear, because they want us to move forward, you know, that I need all the information by close of business tomorrow for us to put it on the agenda for January 10. The following week, so January 10 is a Thursday, the following week, I have meetings every single night I can meet, and then the following week is like normally became holiday, I forget what's on the 22nd, the 23rd, Mike is doing a meeting, but they're the ones who want us to act on all these by the 24th, but not providing the information or.
There's a housing committee meeting on January 10, you mentioned January 10?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to schedule, Michelle, I mean, who's on the housing committee?
I don't know.
Fallon, Kimbrough, Love, DJ.
All right, so there's no overlap, I would like to go ahead and have us hold our meeting on the early mornings.
You said if there's.
Nine, nine.
If there's no.
If we can get a different location, it's not.
Yeah.
5:30.
Yes, it's in here.
I don't think, would you consider your agenda long for the housing meeting?
No, no, Steve was just gonna bring this report, give us a quick update.
Oh, oh, so now overlap.
And now we're adding.
The housing meeting, I mean, it may not be a long meeting, it may, if we start at 5:30, it could possibly be done by 6:00.
Should be short, yeah.
So let's schedule it for 6:00. Is that okay? Maybe, yes.
So.
Yeah.
All right.
I got a first question. Judy?
Yeah, go on.
I'm sorry, I got a first question. We've talked a couple of times, and you have, we've talked about purchasing vehicles, that do we really need to buy vehicles? Is that something that I take care of in October for the budget? They ask me to do that, or how do we get to that point?
Well, Mike has indicated doing that for 2020, however, given this issue with the amount of debt service we're gonna have in 2020, I'm a little, I'm a little bit more skeptical about it. One option is for us to say no, or to say no to half of it, half of the bonding as a start point, and the reality is that the money that you borrow now will be used for vehicles in 2020, in January 2020. That's their purchasing schedule, that's by new. So, so it actually would become a matter of deferment some of those costs into the 2020 budget, one way or another. I don't know, what do we plan about that? I think, I think it gets hard to say to APD, you know.
You can't have cost, you can't have new equipment.
Right. That you need, you know, that you need to put it into your operating budget, even though the director of the budget has not done that, even though we've been talking about this for.
Like, certainly, we probably find it, of course, because it oozes a whole lot of money together.
Any department?
Well, we have recreation, oh, recreation, you know, purchase their vehicle, they have $30,000, I think it's, you know, I, I looked at my budget from last year, and I wrote next to that, and the federal capital plan should come in a hurry, and I told them that. I mean, that's a different physical management person in that department now. But I, you know, I don't, I, if I had my drivers, I would revise our debt policy so that we don't buy anything that has a useful life of five years or less.
In the ongoing conversation, when I was in the council, that was our, that was our point as well, that's operational costing, it shouldn't be bonded.
Yeah, and so I always said, like, you know, the inherent is talk about, you know, lawn hours and vehicles, you know, 30,000, 20,000, usually 20,000, you know, 30,000, $30,000 really should be.
There were a couple of times when we denied some of that, too.
Yeah, operational, it was operational.
The DG has putting a power washer and workman's parts in their equipment purchases, it's on the agenda for tomorrow, we're gonna have a discussion about, it's on the agenda because the vehicles piece, I think, is ready to, you can go, essentially, and as long as we're bringing them in, let's have a conversation about this equipment, but.
Radios.
All right. So in terms of the ordinances, I don't know that we'll, I don't, we probably will not have anything for tomorrow. Just quickly note, the, on the planning committees meeting they're doing, the methadone ordinance on January 9, but that will be for the 7. Did they get amendments on that yet, or were they supposed to?
Yeah, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So, somebody sent a note to them, one of the, sent a note to me, so they must be available, so we'll have to track that.
But they didn't give them to us? Well, that doesn't make sense.
Unless she requested.
Who sent, from who sent a note to you?
She's her own, I don't know, she's sold it.
She might have just seen the, she might have just seen the.
You can see?
No, she might have just seen the email that, that went out.
Backwards.
She may have seen, yeah.
I stopped by to find it on Monday.
Is it now?
Yeah.
To see if I can get any information, and I spoke to Ryan, said he didn't have any at the time, that he was aware, but he didn't talk to Chris, he didn't talk to that.
So is this, was this because, did Chris ask for this to be put on the agenda, or were we just?
I just told guests that they were ready to.
All right, but they haven't given us.
I haven't seen it, but I think he felt.
They really, I mean, you know.
It's going through.
I mean, you're putting something on the public agenda with amendments, and the amendments are not available for the public, so. It does require a public hearing also, so we can't, you know.
Okay.
Remember, all of the, nowadays, all the zoning amendments, all the text changes, your signed ordinance, they all require public hearings, and they also, I think the standards for approval, if I'm looking at the USDL a little bit more, does require that the council has to also make findings with regard to the actions that they take, so it's not just as simple like in the old days, you just pass something and that's it. So there's, there are different standards now. So there's, there are different standards now, but we haven't done any zoning amendments since the USDO was adopted. So those are some of the things that we need to be...
Well, what does that mean?
It's, you, I'm not sure, because we've not done that yet. I don't know if, Planning Department knows either, because last year was really frustrating because they didn't know a lot. There are, there is specific standards in terms of the actions that the council can take. And findings that need to be made. So you need to look in that section of the USDO that relates to that. It's sort of similar to what the Planning Board is supposed to do when they adopt something, where they have, I, I think, I'm not sure, because we've not done this before, and there's no clear direction from anybody on it. But there are different standards there.
That particular section needs a little bit of modification because it's really almost without, it's almost seems to be targeted solely to zoning map changes.
Yeah, well, it could be, but maybe, all right. I, and I'll just, while it's on my mind, just note that the revision, the USDO revisions are on the Planning Department website. Also on there is a memo from Brad, which is several pages, I don't know if it's 19 to 20 pages, that outlines, or is meant to outline, the revisions. So the Planning Board, I think, was gonna begin discussing this in January. I haven't seen anything on the agenda yet, we were at that workshop meeting. Right, there's nothing on the agenda as far as agendas for that discussion.
I think we can have special meetings.
Right, there's nothing published yet, but that aside, the document itself. If you go to the, the case file section, it's right, it's pinned right to the top. And when you go in, in terms of the documents, there also is that memo. There are the track change document, the clean copy document, and also the memo from Brad, which outlines, it's meant to outline the changes in the summary, et cetera. So that is all there, and I would, you know, recommend that people get, start getting ahead, start on that.
There's gonna be a series of meetings on these amendments, and something really, all council members need to be involved in. So kind of, I need a note for me to see if I can grab something that requires the planning unions for us. Can we do the hearing on the 24th or not?
Uh, I don't know, we might. It, it's just, again, the standards for a hearing notice now are different than what we've done in the past also. And that's one of the issues that we had some problems with in the past, when we did this last year.
You're talking about your, I thought we were just going to have this, a planning committee meeting on that. Yeah. But it costs. Okay.
Yeah, but you would...
I mean, reality is, the next meeting is early February, you know, 10 days later.
Would you then want to amend your ordinance on Monday? So that the hearing is on the amended version that you're proposing and not what you originally introduced, is that...
Yeah, I guess I might do that.
So that, you know, and then I don't know how it works...
I sent Kathy the change hearing.
Yeah.
Well, no, not a hearing on Monday, but a hearing on the 24th, on the 24th.
Right, but you want to amend the ordinance on Monday. Then, there is the other issue, if we have actually officially gotten, and how that happens, the recommendation from the Planning Board, which we're required to have.
Oh, on hers.
On hers, yes. And I know that they made the recommendation, and actually, if you go to their website, and what they call the minutes for that meeting does reflect the action they took on your ordinance and the recommended actions.
But we need to, the council needs to receive that.
But they don't, because the, the recommended, yes, because the actual recommendation also includes the findings from the Planning Board. And we, we are supposed to get the actual recommendation from the Planning Board. It's not, we don't have to go to the website and try to figure out what they did. So it's, it's just process and procedure, maybe, you know, but it's important.
Yeah, yeah.
And they need to follow up. Maybe they're spending too much time talking to Russo about his internet thing. What? No, I just like to take a dig at it whenever I can.
I'll, I'll see if we can get that official recommendation from Monday.
Yeah, so I don't know, I don't think we've seen it, and I don't know, it probably should go, I mean, just in terms of the procedure, how they do it, they should probably transmit it to, to Gerald. But I don't know, you know, what procedures they're following.
Richard, I got a question.
Do you make, do you make decisions of the Planning Board in the DCA?
Yes. Those decisions are filed.
Can you make a request to the Plan, uh, Planning Department for their recommendation on Judy's signed ordinance amendments? We'd like to have it in advance on Monday nights, clocks.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, I had gotten, when I brought up about the...
They should be sent out to the council.
You had given me local laws, changes to the Charter, when I had asked about terms of office.
Oh, okay.
A couple of weeks ago. But one of the, I was reading through it, one of the things is like, like the Planning Board, for example, if they're gonna have a meeting, they're supposed to let the Comic Council know like a week ahead of time. Do they do that, or...
What they, well, you know, they publish, this was something actually Sarah Kirkoff did a long time ago because she had a beef with them. And this was, wait, this was like several years ago when that was put in, and procedures were different. So she wanted to make sure that the council got the meeting notices at a reasonable time in advance?
Yeah, because there's one meeting came out, they announced it on Friday at 5:00, and the meeting was gonna be that Monday.
All right, so what they do now, since they publish their meeting schedule at the beginning of the year. So that actually takes care of the requirements of the open meetings law. Except if they're holding a public hearing on something, that there's time requirements specific there. Sometimes their, and their agendas are, you know...
And it's the agenda, I'm more concerned about...
Yeah, the agenda, for example, the agenda, I looked today, none of the agendas for the January meeting are up yet, but they have the workshop, and then the January meeting is later. They do, and I think we do get, I get, you know, the, an email from the various boards that they send out with the agenda. So I don't know if that automatically goes to all council members, or if you need to, because anyone can be on that email list, et cetera, to get that. I'm not sure how far in advance they sent, that's the specific agenda for that particular meeting, as I said, the meeting dates are already published. Any other questions on this issue, topics? If not, okay, so on the regular, the rest of the ordinances, again, I don't have any actions. Correct. And then on the resolutions introduced, 11119 by Tom, related to ballistic, but he wanted to pull that for now, so that's gonna come off the agenda?
Do I have to put, like, withdrawn or ending?
No, since it's, it's not been out, just, it, it's like, it never existed.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so just take it off, like it's never existed. And on the resolutions held, I don't believe we have any action on that either.
I just, can I say something about that?
Yeah.
For the Resolution 396218R, that's the new change at DSA program. And it's kind of been pretty quiet, I haven't moved on it. And I think most of you should have received, again, today, a copy of the letter from the Assistant Advisor Committee reporting that we moved towards a new recommendation. So we're gonna be sending another committee, and we can have further discussion on passing this resolution.
Okay.
And that's in...
Okay, because I had, some people had reached out to me when I was going on that, too.
If you could, you know, take the time to read that, we've got, I mean, these are people on this advisory committee that have been pretty closely on the issue. But we can talk more back, because I know there's still council members who have concerns. And, and the administration staff has concerns.
So that's for you, if you're a consumer, perhaps, to read out.
Correct. But the whole idea is that, you know, you will reduce, you know, you'll do same month, say that's what you're saying.
All right. Any other questions?
There's a few people missing, I wanted to be a part of the conversation, Joe, John.
Yeah, it's gonna be quick, it's not a...
Does it, do you still have questions?
They mustn't come back from the, they mustn't come back from the Ottawa issue last night.
Well, they didn't, either last night or this morning. I didn't, Dave Gallon, I think he's in California, because he posted something about the camera, he's gonna be out there. And I think Brian was in the, yeah.
He texted me on my other number.
I think Brian was down, yeah, Brian was down there, yeah.
So they were all out?
Yeah.
I think he arrested one, too.
Oh, they all went, well.
I said they were all out.
That's what they're doing, spending more time popping up in, you know. Anyway. And Bill Kelly's just trying to get out of there. Call me again today, I haven't talked, just talked to him.
Did he really?
No, I haven't, we haven't connected yet.
We had conversations, trying to get people to talk about it again. They're willing to do now, you know, one...
I don't know, listed topics for this morning, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of weird.
The thing is, I kind of talked with him recently, and rates are low now, so it's a good time to lock in and help us.
Any other...
I talked to Mike today, too, about the city booking, yeah, collecting hybrid vehicles. You know, even, even just like purchase, you know...
Yeah, we should be, we should be purchasing hybrid vehicles.
I said it.
Yes, absolutely.
It's so cheaper, I don't know if it was cheaper.
They're never cheaper on the front end, Richard, they're cheaper on the long run. When it comes to gas. The hybrid, let's, maybe we'll go full electric. Whatever, some of those books. But we gotta, if we're going green as a city, we gotta, we gotta get some hybrid vehicles.
Are there any other issues on the agenda, folks? Mike?
Not on the agenda, but... You seen the police cars in New York City, the electric ones? Those are small.
New sofa.
Those are so small. I mean, compact.
We might talk about that Monday in executive session.
I was in Denver, yeah, 10 years ago.
The Living Wage Ordinance, and actually, I was gonna, we're gonna bring that up this morning, but they canceled the leadership meeting. Not that we ever get a lockdown there.
We start early on Monday night?
Yes, we should.
Well, we don't have that big of an agenda, so...
Well, no, because we want to talk about the LSR Williams thing, it's actually, basically. There was, decided to have some discussion on the LSR Williams issue.
So let's start.
Didn't want to do that tonight because there were some people missing, but we're talking, Kelly and I were talking about doing it at caucus on Monday. So the question was, since it might involve a little bit more time, although the agenda for Monday right now is really short, so I don't know that we have a lot to go over on the agenda. Whether or not we do that at 6:30, or whether or not we convene earlier.
I would say convene earlier, because even just that topic could contribute, we take up a lot.
And then the council meeting itself should not be long, if this is all we have on the agenda, so whatever.
I'd prefer starting with...
And by now, most of us have watched the video, right? If you haven't, please watch it. It's essentially the same video, I just think the magnification is different.
This would be also an executive session discussion.
And there is executive session to pass?
There are two, I think, provisors I could see, either as a...
Financial application.
Personnel issue or pending litigation issue, or I, you know, I don't know, I mean, but I think we would need to do it that way.
So we do an early caucus?
Yeah, it's on. So is there a consensus on doing an earlier caucus in 6:30?
Yes.
Should, do you want to do it at 6:00?
Yes.
6:00, okay with folks? Okay. Then we'll just need to post a notice on that, that caucus will be at 6:00, even though we plan to go into executive session. But we'll do our agenda first and then go into executive session, do it that way.
So do we want to put on the agenda, executive session? If we've noticed, just to update all.
I, you know, what we can do is do our agenda first.
And then go into executive session.
And then just, you know, which will be really quick, and then go into executive session.
What should we do here, about 9:00?
Huh?
Second thing from 6:00, 6:30.
Well...
We might run over it.
I think, I mean, we don't need to post that we're doing that, because, anyway.
Then you're right.
It's not part of our agenda.
What?
No, no, I'm just asking, what's your door process behind wanting to post the executive session?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What would Julie's door process, as relates to wanting to post the executive session to the public?
Just so people don't vote, I'm not sitting here, I'm like, you know, if somebody wants to go to caucus here, then we're like, oh, you're here, get out. All right, it's just, it's just... You tell them, we're starting at 6:00. They bother to come at 6:00, and then they go, bye.
Well, no, once caucus is over, right, we're doing it after caucus. We're doing it after caucus. No, we do caucus at 6:00.
Of course, the agenda, we can finish off in five minutes.
Yeah, we doing caucus at 6:00, and then we'll go into executive session. That's it, so they be here at 6:00. Caucus.
Is there any other, okay, you know, actually, Tom had raised an issue earlier, not earlier, but regarding the Living Wage Ordinance. And I think, Ginny, you were on that email as well, and I had copied Kelly and Kathy on it. And it's an issue that had come up a couple of times, one in relation to the, I think you raised it with the Mohawk, Mike. Which it wouldn't apply in that case in any event. But it was also, came up in the context of the contract that we have, I guess, with Sierra Recycling, and some of the issues down there. I'm not sure if it applies in that case either, but it's, the ordinance itself has been kind of dormant, I think, back in 2016.
We were looking very closely at it.
And I don't remember whatever happened, was there an outcome?
There were no, I sat, I remember sitting down with John Ryland, there were no, or, you know, the ordinance is over a certain, over a certain amount.
Amount, but that also, that number is supposed to be adjusted annually, because there's a base amount that was set when it was adopted in 2005 or 2006, and that amount... Well, yeah, the hourly wage was supposed to be adjusted.
But it only applies to businesses with contracts that's over a certain amount, I forget what that, that...
Yeah, and I have no idea about what the, what the contract is with Sierra, and whether or not that applies.
But at the time, we did go through all the contracts, and, you know, everybody was paying prevailing wage that fell under the ordinance, just so you know, but I don't know...
Yes, Sierra, what we heard, it was one of the citizens wrote to us, said that they're advertising for $11 an hour. And a gentleman was killed a couple of weeks ago.
So it's definitely something worth taking into consideration.
Was the state minimum wage upstate? 12, 13 now?
It's, I forget now, it was a new one.
It was 12? 12, is it 12?
Yeah, but we have a minimum wage of 15, I believe.
In New York, yes.
Yeah, but we collected bargaining... Arrangements are exempt, collected bargaining, that, that's why I think it might be, I'm not sure, because they, they were, they subcontract, what you're talking about, what I saw was that they subcontract... Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So there are issues there, there are definitions of service contracts, and what a service contract is, and whether this, not, that qualifies as a service contract, and things like that, so I just...
Richard, I got a question on the general ordinance, though.
$20,000.
What was your, when you did it, what was...
28 above, right?
I didn't, I wasn't the original sponsor.
Yeah, of at least $20,000.
But it was, I was here, it was a long time ago.
Do you know what the retention, if it's a retention fee, it's $30,000?
Uh, yeah, it's actually in there.
Because that's nothing to do with New York State.
No, no, it was meant to create a living wage rate. This was adopted in 2005, and when it was adopted, um...
It's to go gradually, right?
It was supposed to be, I just saw that recently.
It's section 3216.
Which one? Which one?
What was it, the yearly?
Oh, living wage.
The hourly rate.
Yeah, the living wage shall be calculated on an hourly basis, is paying ten twenty five to covered employees if the employer provides at least seventy percent of the cost of healthcare benefits, and eleven ninety one for other covered employees. And then, the amount of the living wage shall be increased annually to reflect inflation as captured by the, the C P I urban.
Yes, and we were looking.
The first indexing adjustment, yeah, and I don't know what.
And then we were issuing a report, it was never finalized.
Right, and I don't know if that, there should be some provision where that update is published, so people know what it is, and I have never, I don't know if that's the case of that.
Okay, well, we.
Yeah, and then there was the compliance committee, which, right now, I mean, the last time Kathy chairs it, that was appointed back in twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, I mean, a new one, there was an old one that just never met, and then there was a new one, and I'm not sure if the same people are still on it or not, I mean.
Yes.
It was you, Corey Hogan, who was.
He's not, he's, he was still over.
Bernie Mulligan, Pastor Elgin Taylor, and Anita Thayer.
Well, we, you know, we can try to, we, you know, get back together, because we've worked closely with administration to develop a report on this, and most of it was done, because there was a drive report, it was never finalized, though. And a big part of that is figuring out whose job it is, well, one part was, whose job it is to come up with the, what, living wage increase, or to take a look at it based on the C P I.
Right. I mean, the C P I is a published index, you just take it and multiply it.
But somebody, but someone has to do it here to make sure.
Right.
But you owe a lot, right? Because if this is from two thousand.
Budget director.
Budget director, I was going to say, that's the budget office.
First of all, we, we don't have any, the administration is the responsible.
Because it's money, that's their.
I, you know, we took a look at what all employees are making here, and everyone, there were maybe a few temporary employees that weren't making the living wage, I think.
And the crossing guards, I remember, that was everywhere, every committee.
Well, they, their salaries are, well, plus they're under, they're covered by collective bargaining, naturally, they wouldn't be, they'd be exempt, yeah.
Because you got to remember, well, not part-time, of course, but that's an issue, but all the rest of the employees, you know, they get substantial benefits, and that figures in.
Yeah, the health insurance does figure in, but what I heard is that the guys in the recycling don't get all the insurance, and that's why, one of the persons that came.
Part-time workers, the dog. An email, the initial email. Who was this from?
Fred Piper.
Oh, oh, okay, is that on this thread that you?
Yeah, it's on what I forwarded.
Okay, thanks. And I forwarded over, Richard, I wasn't sure, you know, what, I thought we should look at it if we need to, but.
Sierra Fridays is the only game in town.
There's a, is this a private lines committee appointed by the mayor?
Yeah, that's what Kathy chairs.
Oh, it just hasn't.
There's no other recycling.
It's Kathy, Corey Hogan, Anita Thayer, Bill Mulligan, Bill.
Bernie.
Bernie Mulligan.
And does any contract for twenty dozen dollars? Jared, it's just.
Yeah.
He just tells the temp agencies provided, which I agree, but temp agencies don't usually provide health insurance.
No.
No.
So, so these other people could be trying to, right, or it's a.
But it's a temp agency that provides the employees for Sierra, so do they, do they work for Sierra, they're a subcontract? We don't contract with a temp agency, so the question, that was my question, where, how this, to what, it has to be clarified.
Well, the other thing is, if we don't have an exact amount for what the living wage, and the living wage ordinance might not be fifty dollars an hour, if we don't have a formula and not do something else, not do exactly what that amount would be, and without having that number, nobody's ready to, you know, so.
Budget office.
Right, I mean, yeah, the budget office should be able to calculate.
Should be able to give that number, that's it.
There'd be a.
It might make a sen, make sense for an amendment to ultimately make this, require that the annual update be published.
By the budget.
By whomever, yes, so that we, you know. All right, anything else, folks? If not, I guess we can go.
I want to the poll, and beyond.